Good morning, welcome to the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees meeting September 2016. I ask everyone to rise and I ask Mr. Cozart to leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, approval of the agenda and the amendments. Everyone should have the amendments at your place. The amendments are-
Mr. Chairman, you want to do a roll call?
Maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Why not?
Moving too fast.
Roll call, please. Ask the Secretary to roll call.
Here.
Dr. Driesbach.
Here.
Dr. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Dr. Maddick.
I guess I'm here.
Dr. Reno.
Here.
All right, thank you.
Now we'll move to approval of the agenda and the amendments. You should have at your place amendments to the consent agenda. Number three, under C, there's two additions to the Personnel Action, attached with C. And then also under, right after this, right after we approve the agenda, Dr. Givens has some special announcements. Then we have under eight, the interim Vice President of Academic Affairs, approval for spring semester academic calendar for 2016-2017. And then under number nine, Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Susan Lindahl, revised financial report. So, that's also attached. So, ask for approval for the agenda and the amendments.
So moved.
It's been moved. And second is to approve the agenda and the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Dr. Givens.
Thank you. Recently, we lost two of our own. And I say two because there's Tim Door who passed away yesterday, and then Detective Lancaster who was a graduate of Kansas City Kansas Community College Police Academy. So, I want to read a little bit about both of them, and then I will ask you to do a moment of silence. Any man's death diminishes me because I am involved in mankind. Tim Door, Coordinator of the Medical Assistant Program at the TEC, died suddenly yesterday morning. This has shocked all of us at our core. Tim was a dedicated educator and took great pride in developing a quality program. The May 2016 graduates had a 100% certification pass rate with an 86% placement rate. We received official notice that the program was awarded their initial accreditation with no citations. Quite an unheard of feat. We heard that yesterday. While Tim missed experiencing the excitement and joy about the accreditation notification, we are comforted in knowing that he received informal notice of this just prior to his passing. Tim was actively involved in many committees across the college. Most recently, he was involved in resurrecting our formal program review process and serving on the Student Learning Outcomes Committee. In the Health Professions Division, Tim was leading the charge to develop a mission statement reflective of the direction KCKCC is heading. I know you will want to share your memories with all of us. Rest assured, we want to hear and will provide time and opportunities to openly hear and share our feelings. At a time in the near future, we will meet to remember Tim Door, our friend, colleague, and coordinator of the Medical Assistant Program at the Kansas City Kansas Community College Technical Education Center. Today also, we honor the family of Detective Brad D. Lancaster who died in the line of duty protecting our county on May 9, 2016. We know Detective Lancaster was a valedictorian graduate of our police academy. Kansas City Kansas Community College is honored to award two scholarships for complete tuition to his daughters, Brianna and Jillian. His wife Jamie Lancaster and daughters are here today. Will you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And now I'd like for Mrs. Jamie Lancaster and daughters to come forward and be recognized with our sincere gratitude. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Ziegler, I apologize. Would you please come forward? We just wanted to thank you for being here this morning. I failed to recognize your presence, so please, please welcome the Chief of Police of Kansas City Kansas. Thank you. All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to pull a Human Resources Report for later discussion.
Okay. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number C, the Personnel Action. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Audience, the patrons and petitioners, anyone wishing to speak to the board this morning? Say none. We'll move along to the Student Senate. The Student Senate President and Vice President are here. Jay Davila and Cheyenne Lake. Before you get started, we'd like to congratulate you on your recent elections and welcome.
Hello, thank you for having us.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Jay Davila. I'm the President.
And I'm Cheyenne Lake. I'm the Vice President.
The first thing on what we have to tell you guys is about 12 days of KCC. And it was in the beginning of the year, August 22nd to the August 26th. What we had in Lower Jewel was all these tables lined up of every club that gives students to know what we have on campus. There's about 21 booths and almost all the sheets are filled up. So, a lot of people were starting to sign up, get involved. So, it was pretty good. And I think it's on the sheet of like the 12 days and what was going on. And then, our first meeting was September 14th. It was in the Learning Commons to show it off, to help students know. Most of the people at the meeting were there for the first time, so they really got to see how it was. It was pretty good. There are 31 clubs, organizations, and interest groups all together that showed up. We gave out free smoothies for the people that showed up, so it was pretty cool. Our theme this year is visibility, and if you guys don't know what that is, it's to help clubs be more visible on campus, to let students know, yes, we have a drama club, we have an auto engineering club, so if you're interested in that, just come in, have fun on campus, just don't leave, stay, have fun. We're gonna try to celebrate diversity this year because we have a very diverse campus, so we thought we should celebrate that because most campuses really don't celebrate diversity. And then we gave out committee assignments, so for the clubs to sign up for new committees this year. And then September 15th, we had our evening reception, and it was a barbecue contest. Nobody signed up for the barbecue contest, but we still had pulled pork, so it was pretty good. It was, more people attended this year than last year. More teachers actually showed up this year, so they brought their classes, so it was pretty, it was nice. We gave out, so it was about 150 people that attended. So, it's pretty good for after, for like the evening reception. And then this year, our back-to-school bash. We had to move inside because of the rain, but it was a really good turnout. We had about 400 people show up. That's pretty good.
That's great.
It was in Lower Jewel. We had a DJ, and the students really liked him. And so, we had 70 booths of all the clubs and organizations that showed up. And then we gave out dollar lunches, and everybody likes dollar lunches, and it was burger, veggie burgers, hot dogs, and your choice of chips and drink. And then, we also had snow cones and cotton candy, and that was free. And then, our upcoming events are our Student Senate Meeting, which is September 28th and October 12th. It'll be in Lower Jewel. We have a new time this year. It's 1:15 to 2:15. It's easier for the students to like, to attend it than having to wait later in the day, so just to come in, get it over with, and do the other stuff they have to do. And then, we have Student Appreciation Day. It's gonna be in the Pioneer Center at September 27th. And it's gonna be on the front door patio, but if it rains, they'll move it into the gym. And it's basically like the back-to-school bash, but just for them. And then, we have a blood drive, October 4th, in the Lower Jewel, from 10 to 2. And then we have, and then we have shirts for you guys. It's where, if you guys want to come to the events, the basketball game, volleyball game, if you'd like to wear them. And then we also have these for organizations.
Nice.
Very nice.
Thank you.
We'll have an updated one in the spring, but this is just the cut that we have now. We have one for student, like, take one, that's when students want it, when they use them. And we also have all these for you. And then all the shirts, the T-shirts for you guys are over there. You guys can try on sizes later. And that's all we have for you.
Thank you very much. Any trustees have any questions?
No, I'd just like to commend them for all that they're doing, you know, to really get people involved and to build some spirit and some camaraderie and that. You all are doing a phenomenal job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, Communications.
Mr. Chair, I have two. Representative Kevin Yoder will be hosting the seventh Third District Job Fair at the KCKCC Burke Technical Education Center on Thursday, October 27th. That's next week. From 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, the center will be open exclusively for veterans. And then from 10:00 to 1:00, it will be open to all job seekers. They're requesting that job seekers dress for success and bring several copies of their resumes. There is no registration fee required, and you can go to Representative Yoder's website to find out more information. And I have a phone number, 913-621-0832, if you want further information. That's Representative Yoder's office. And ACCT, American Association of Community College Trustees, the latest action in Washington DSC is significant because the House passed HR 5587, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act by a vote of 405 to 5. The bill provides a six-year reauthorization of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, and it maintains much of the existing structure of the Perkins Act that is already, that we're already working according to those rules. And it modernizes and updates many areas of the law. So, highlights of the bill are available on the internet, and you can find those, and we're excited about the bill passing again because there's been much discussion about that. And Sheriff Ash, you may want to mention something about how significant that was because I know the trustees discussed it at their meeting.
Well, it's huge because technical education, as you know, we make quite an investment here. So, it's huge. I saw Congressman Yoder Sunday at the Leavenworth Road Association Parade, had an opportunity to thank him for his support of the bill and his work. He wholeheartedly supports that. And I also know that Senators Moran and Roberts, when it makes its way to the Senate side, they're huge supporters as well. So, our Washington delegation are behind it, you know, 100%. So, that's great news for us.
Absolutely. Okay, that completes my report.
All right. It's time to sign the master contract between KCKCC Board of Trustees and the professional employees of the Kansas City Kansas Community College. So, would you please come forward, the representative for the faculty? Where is the, oh, I have it. Is this it?
Do you know what, if there are members of the negotiating team, why don't you come and stand up here beside them, behind them, with them, close by, so you can be in the picture?
Why don't you sit down? Oh, yeah. I thought maybe we'd sit down and do this.
We'll just stand around you in the corner.
Okay, he just initially noticed your name. Come on, let's gather in there. Get close.
Pardon, pardon.
Smiles, everybody, smile. us for Punch and Cookies, and we'll resume the meeting in just a short while.
Communications on the list.
Yes. And we're going to go back to the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'd call the meeting back to order. Hope everyone enjoyed your Punch and Cookies, and we certainly enjoyed the celebration. I'd like to go back to item number three on the consent agenda and ask for approval of part C, our motion to approve part C.
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded to approve part C on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Aye. I'd like to speak to her real quickly. I asked to be pulled off the agenda on the consent agenda. I did have an opportunity to talk to Dr. Lindahl between sessions, and I did have my concern answered, so I'm fine with the passing of it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, opposed? Motion carrying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With your permission, I would like, we had a number of key positions filled in the Human Resources Personnel Actions, and I would like the new hires to have an opportunity to introduce themselves and their position so that the board and the college community has a chance to know the individuals who are filling a number of key positions in our college at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Rios. If you're on the list as a new hire, please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
I am Scott Kramer, and I am the new Student Retention Coordinator.
And what exactly is your responsibility as a new-
My responsibility is making sure that we stay open.
Now, I don't want to put all the weight on your shoulders, but, no, there's a nuance to this, and I just want to just let folks know about it.
Yeah. I will be working closely with the admissions office, well, basically, every office on campus, making sure that we do keep retention, keep students here, trying to make it more not exciting, because it is an exciting place, there's a lot of great things going on, but making it easier for students to stay on campus, to be able to graduate or finish the programs they want, so they can go on and transfer to another four-year university.
So, basically, understanding the resources that are available to them-
Yes.
-and that they utilize them to their maximum effectiveness for their own personal intentions as well as for the college.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name, I'm Todd Miles. I am the new Faculty Program Coordinator for Fire Science.
All right. Do you like your new space?
Yes, yes. And we've been working with Cliff to hopefully get it started here soon, because my instructors are raring to go, and we got all this stuff, and they'll find a place to put it.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I know there are.
And not here? Is there anyone? Don't be shy.
Oh, yeah, and the promotions, yeah.
Hello, I'm Stacy Davis, and I actually was promoted to Payroll Coordinator.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very popular position.
I have learned that. There's lots of people that want to make me comfortable in my new position.
That's right. Whatever she needs. I understand we have a new doctor in the house.
I finished. I finally got it done. And I also received a promotion with that. I'm now the new Executive Director for Continuing Ed, so thank you all for your support.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I like those school colors on them.
Alicia Huxton, I'm the Executive Director for Entrepreneurship and Workforce Development.
Congratulations.
My name is Carice White, and I am stepping into the role of Coordinator/Instructor for what we will be calling freshman seminar. But I'm actually taking over, stepping into the shoes of Joyce McMahon, who did a wonderful job with HUDV in coordinating that particular program. I'll be working with multiple individuals. I know I'll be working with Scott Kramer, with Mr. Sean Garrett, with Ms. Delphina Wilson, and with Mr. Terry, I'm sorry. Mr. Steven Terry, and coming up with ideas on revamping the program so that we do a much better job of retaining our students from semester to semester. So, I'm really looking forward to working in this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm vertically challenged. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sean Garrett, and I have been promoted to Assistant Dean of Student Services, and I oversee advising students with disability services, testing, and oversee the new freshman year experience class. So, I'm excited in this position, and I'm excited about the great things that we're gonna do, working with Dr. Terry and Dr. Wilson.
All right, thank you. That's it? All right. Well, thank you all very, very much for coming. I know you have jobs to do, but I think it's just important that we become more familiar with the staff that do the great work that makes the Kansas City Kansas Community College one of the best community colleges in the state of Kansas, and beyond.
And I agree, Trustee Rios. It appears that we're putting a lot of emphasis on student retention and the student experience, and I think that's very, very important, that students feel welcome here and- that, that students feel welcome here, and there's a group of people here that want them here and want to give them the best experience possible. So we really applaud your, your work in that area, Dr. Gibbons, thank you very much. Okay, next we have the KCKCC Student Leadership, and that's Andrika Wilcoxen, Linda Warner, Dr. Stacy Tucker, and Dr. Marissa Gray.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
On behalf of our colleagues here, thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to share this morning. We are excited. It has been a phenomenal start of our semester this year. The energy of our students and our staff and everyone here on campus has just been awesome. We are very excited to announce that we have started a brand-new thing here on our campus, and it's called the KCKCC Student Leadership Institute. And this was birthed from a dream that I kind of had, and I, and some inspirations from the rest of my colleagues here on our campus. We have people on our campus who host workshops all year round, that, and we invite our students to attend these workshops, and staff, and classes, and just anyone, and we have a community that comes, and we, we kind of just have them. And so we thought, well, what a great opportunity to be able to, to collaborate together, because that's what we do here at KCKCC. We just have great collaboration, and work together to be able to give our students something that they can take away with, something very tangible. They're learning great skills in the classroom, they're learning, they're, they're taking those skills into the workplace and learning things, and we're thinking, well, how can we enhance what they're doing? And so what if we'd help them develop some leadership skills? What are some of those things, what could those be? It doesn't, this Leadership Institute isn't creating extra work for our, our staff and our college, it's just what they do, because they have a passion to do it for our, for our students on our campus. And so we've come up with several types of workshops, which you have a handout. We have three months' worth of workshops, and we're gonna continue it in spring. And what we've done is we've asked our students on campus to, to join this institute and to commit to attending so many of these workshops, and at the end of the year, we're going to celebrate their success. We're gonna celebrate the, their attendance, their leadership skills that they've developed. And with a banquet, we're gonna give them a certificate of completion, it's just gonna be a really awesome opportunity for our students to take away this from our campus, to take to their workplaces, for their resumes, to take to other institutes who are higher education for scholarships, whatever it is. I think this is an opportunity for us to be able to say, we are the most, what?
Progressive.
What else?
Forward-looking.
And?
Forward-moving.
And?
Entrepreneurial and diverse community college in the entire state of Kansas.
And beyond. I'm telling you, we got it happening here, right at KCKCC. So, yes, come on, we should, we should be celebrating, this is an awesome, awesome thing we put on our campus, and it's just a vision that I just, I had, and we, we birthed it, we, we made it happen here, because that's just what we do at KCKCC. So I'm gonna stop and let Stacy go.
Good morning. So just a little bit about the criteria for this program. We've already had two orientations. We had an orientation during the day, and we also had one in the evening. Our goal was to get ten students to complete this program or sign up for it in the entire academic year, and we packed twenty-three, twenty-five for the day program. So, we've already exceeded our expectation. The criteria for this program is we're asking students to complete twelve of these workshops. It's in this handout that we gave you. And it's very easy for the students to keep track, because all the facilitator has to do is initial if the student was there. So it's five this semester, a total of twelve in the academic year. We didn't want students to try to get all twelve done in one semester or one month, so we have spread it out, and so it's five this semester and twelve total. And then we will recognize them and give them a certificate of completion at the end of the year, and hopefully have a nice reception for those students. We've already completed, the three of us have already completed one workshop apiece for students, and we had anywhere from eight to students at the first one. I think my session had twelve, so we are generating student interest in this, for sure. Do you have any questions about the criteria?
Question about the program?
Okay.
Just, who's gonna provide, who's gonna do the facilitating? Will it be the three of you, or will there be other people brought in to facilitate discussions?
No, we have qualified faculty and staff all across campus. We also allow students to do different community events. Andrika sends those emails out, so if they're an evening student and can't get here during the day, we are sending those out to the students who are interested in the program to, to build in some community events to this program. So it'll be a variety of different people presenting workshops.
So it really is spreading across the campus?
Yes.
Not just a small group, it's really involving a lot of faculty and so on, and doing this?
We wanted to do the first couple of sessions, just because we had students, brand-new, that didn't make it to orientation, and we wanted to make sure that they got this in their hand, and also understood about the program. But we have one tomorrow on ethical leadership, and that's being actually taught by an adjunct instructor. So, Marissa?
And in addition to your question, we are bringing in some of the work, some of our business leaders in for some of the components. For the next one on attendance, actually, we will have UPS to come and present that. So it's a, it's a combination of our staff, our faculty, and community leaders. And when you think about the students and what they'll actually gain from this experience, we're talking about networking among the students, but we're also talking about helping them to see different sides of their faculty and other, other leaders here on campus. They will engage with other students, they'll develop personally, they'll develop from a civic standpoint, they'll also be able to, to expand their outlook of what Windout County holds for them, and then the skills that they can take back to the community. During the summer, K-BOR presented an activity that allowed many of the institutions across campus to participate in what's called Bring Your A-Game to Work. And so we've included this particular program as a part of the leadership component, and then they will get a, another certificate if they complete all eight areas. So for the students, it's, it's just an opportunity for them to grow. Not all of our students are currently leaders in organizations, but this will give them the skill set that, so they can step up and become a leader within the organizations on campus. Any other questions? And we invite you to come to any of the sessions, just to interact and network with the students as well, because we consider you our utmost leaders for the campus.
Thank you very much.
We're just gonna leave you today with one quote from a student. At orientation, we asked the students to complete this question. What would you like to accomplish as a member of the KCKCC Student Leadership Institute? And Jasmine responded, I want to leave a legacy, a part of me at KCKCC, by demonstrating my accomplishments in the community as well in the classroom. I want to learn what it takes to be a leader, so I can be a mentor to others. I feel that this program will enhance my skills, in which I can put them into action at my four-year university. Better yet, it will tell them that I have been a part of my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice job. Thank you. Okay, I have some resolutions to read. The first one, a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA forty-one dash seven-one-nine, paragraph C. Whereas Kansas annotated forty-one-seven-one-nine-C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property, except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas Kansas City Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA forty-one-seven-one-nine-C, specify property which is under the control of the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees, which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore be it resolved by the KCKCC Board of Trustees, Section One, exemption for the following dates in 2016, from twelve-thirty to two-thirty PM, Wednesday, September twenty-first, Wednesday, October nineteenth, Wednesday, November sixteenth, Wednesday, December seventeenth. The upper jewel level from, from the requirement of KSA forty-one-seven-one-nine-C. Section Two, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of celebration of Mass for the Catholic students in Kansas City Kansas Community College, passed and approved by the Board of Trustees, KCKCC, on September twentieth. As for motion to approve the resolution?
So moved?
Seconded? Moved and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Resolution approved. Okay, another resolution, same thing regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA forty-one-seven-one-nine-C. Whereas Kansas annotated seventy, forty-one-seven-one-nine-C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on the property, except where is expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA forty-one-dash-seven-one-nine, specify property which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees, and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section One, KCKCC hereby exempts from Thursday, September twenty-ninth, 2016, from three to eight PM, and Thursday, October twenty-seventh, 2016, from three to eight PM, the area just outside the art gallery, near the Blue Devil Deli, from the requirement of KSA forty-one-seven-one-nine-C. Section Two, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of an artist's reception on September twenty-ninth and October twenty-seventh. On both dates, alcohol, alcohol will not be served until four-thirty PM, and guests will be carded and given tickets for a maximum of two drinks, passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC, and being held on September twenty, 2016. Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved? Seconded?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Okay. President's report. My agenda went away.
Oh, okay. We have student services. Dr. Steven, or is it? Is he here? Okay. There he is, yes. Can't read my notes.
Good morning again.
And how close are you soon to be?
I, next semester, my last semester of coursework, and I'll be writing my dissertation next year.
All right.
About four years ago, when I was hired to be the Director of the Student Advising Center, I told the staff that I wanted the Student Advising Center to become an award-winning advising center, because I think that we do great work. And so I've learned since to way, the way to create an award-winning advising center is to have award-winning advisors. So this morning, I'm excited to announce that we have an award-winning advisor among our staff in the Student Advising Center. Ms. Carla Pestock has received the Supportive Advisor Award from the Kansas Advising, Academic Advising Network at this year's annual conference. Carla, will you come?
Wasn't expecting to speak. I just want to say thank you. I am very honored by this award. I do my job, because I love it. I love our students, and it's very emotional for me, I've been here twenty-nine years, so this is quite an honor. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to announce that Carla was nominated by our former Administrative Assistant for our former Dean of Student Service, Kate Crossley. So she had a nominator for this award, and so we're very excited to have Carla as a part of our team, and we will become an award-winning advising center. Thank you.
Dr. Baer of Lanin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great things are happening at Kansas City Kansas Community College, and it is all about students. This is what we do, this is what we come here every morning to do. In the last month or so, you have heard a lot about the Learning Commons. You heard from me, you heard from staff in the library and Learning Commons, but today it is going to be a little bit different. We want to start off by fulfilling a request that we heard from Trustee Rios and other trustees about some data on visitors that have been in the building. And I would like to invite Director, Assistant Director Amanda Williams in the Learning Resource Center to share that with us, and then we will play a video for some feedback from our students and how or what they think about the changes that are taking place in the Learning Commons. Very exciting. So Amanda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start by saying it's been a whirlwind of a month. A lot has happened in the development of the Learning Commons, and it's taken a whole team of people to make it happen. The academic support staff, the librarians, buildings and grounds, we've had IT, the supportive administration, of course, the board. So to begin with, we had to look at what our vision was for the Learning Commons, okay? Our goal is that we're going to enhance academic rigor and have collaborative learning for students, faculty, and staff. So things that we have seen since being over there this last month are things such as a faculty member coming to visit to see what the space is all about, and in her tour of the Learning Commons, finding a student that needed some assistance. And I actually had to leave the faculty member there, because they were so engrossed in helping the student, which is exactly what we want to see. On another occasion, we had a student come in to rent a calculator from the library, and she turned around and found, wow, there's math tutoring available here. So putting the resources in one place for students. We want to provide a technology-enriched environment that fosters everywhere, all the time learning. We understand that when students leave the classroom, or they leave our campus, their learning does not stop. And the models that we're following in education are actually that the students should be doing a lot of learning outside of the classroom, and when they come in the doors of the classroom, then they're actively using that learning to advance their education. We want to make sure we're stimulating critical thinking and personalizing learning across all academic disciplines. We do this by providing spaces and opportunities for academic discourse across all areas. Our goals are to assist in the retention, recruitment, and persistence of our students. We want to be the hub of student academic learning on campus, outside of the classroom. We want to increase traffic, and I'm happy to report, and we'll be sharing that with you, that we are doing so. We're increasing the traffic to the library of faculty, staff, and students. We're streamlining academic support, we're creating that technology-enriched environment, and we are hoping to stimulate the critical thinking skills of our students. So the last month, you've seen some of these signs across campus, okay? It's pretty powerful to look back on all that's occurred and how far we've come in the last month. At the last board meeting, there were a set of ranges downstairs on the lower level, and another set of ranges on the upper level, that are no longer there. Those have been taken down, carpet has been laid, the Java, the commons has opened in the lower level of our Learning Commons. We participated in the first twelve days at KCKCC, where we had a cotton candy machine and drew in classes of visitors to come in and check out the new space. I got to operate a cotton candy machine, that was in other duties as assigned, that they didn't tell me about. that they didn't tell me about. And we've hosted multiple library orientations and class visits. We invited Student Senate to hold their first meeting in the Learning Commons and to encourage continued collaboration with our students to find out what their needs and wants are for the space. We've held multiple Spanish conversation hours. And we began the process of reimagining the tutoring program. No longer are we separate distinct labs. There is tutoring happening all over, all the time. Athletics sends their athletes over to the Learning Commons for their study halls to where they can receive the assistance that they need. And I have a short video to kind of showcase the space as it has changed. You'll notice that the traffic flow inside the building continues to increase. I'd like to read a statement that was received from one of our coordinators from a student that had visited the Learning Commons. And she said, "I really like how you've turned the reading and writing space into such a warm and inviting place from scratch. I am excited for all the changes and all your new open space. It seems much nicer than what you had before, along with a new positive learning environment, in my opinion. I am sure I will be stopping in frequently as I enjoy the Learning Commons as a place to study with focus." So when we start to talk about visits to the Learning Commons, at the last board meeting, it was asked, "How are we keeping track of the students that are coming in?" At that time, I know we had the door counters that keep track of foot traffic coming in and out of the building. On our campus, we have also utilized AccuTrack to track student data across multiple departments. So on the first day of classes, that was ready to go. So what we have found is within the first, this last twenty-two days, we have had seven hundred and thirty-seven unduplicated students. That means those students have come in more than one time. Very excited, yes, very exciting. In that, there is a learning curve, we're learning the things that we need to put in place. It's been a great experience. Deborah is telling me that that's, we're on the low end. We really think we're on the low end of the number of students that have come in the door. We have not been able to capture the student, the class visits in a quick enough time to capture those numbers. The door count, I believe, was over two thousand for this week alone. So unduplicated student count, I can tell you, seven hundred and thirty-seven, which is very exciting. We are going to be adding additional kiosks, those are on order, to where it will streamline as students come into the Learning Commons, they can check in quicker. So we should be able to collect more data going forward. All of this is very important because best practice tells us that the more that we can engage students to come into centers such as the Learning Commons and interact with faculty, staff, and other students, they're more likely to be retained here at KCKCC. And that's what we want. We want to create that sense of belonging for our students, and we want them to be retained and be successful when they leave here. So with that emerging needs that we're finding, is continuing to look at building accessibility and access, how are our students getting to the building? Additional mobile technology, with all of these people comes the need for more technology. So we're working very closely with I T., of course, and they've been very receptive to helping us get the things that we're going to need in the space. Multiple sign-in stations, of course. With open environments, if anyone has an open concept house, it's great most of the time. However, there are times when you need a little bit more quiet. So it's the same thing with our students, is being able to create private, quiet spaces within the Learning Commons. And of course, being able to have a classroom within the Learning Commons with all the latest and greatest technology available. If you would go ahead and click on this video, just to showcase some of the more modern Learning Commons that as we continue on, things that we're looking at to help guide vision, that we will continue to work on. So without further ado, I think it's time to turn it over to what some of our students had to say. Randy came over to the Learning Commons to record some student testimonials. And it was a pretty exciting time, we were actually getting carpet upstairs. So we had multiple athletic teams in the Learning Commons. It was a great time to capture some video. So here you'll get to hear from students.
Hi, I'm Emily Pendleton, a fourth semester nursing student. I enjoy using the library for multiple things, studying. I use the computer resources that are down here to print anything that I could need extra besides what's provided from my teachers. I study here probably twenty hours a week. Only thing I could suggest to add would be more study rooms that are private, and I can guarantee it'd be a quiet area for me to utilize. And I enjoy having the coffee shop over here now, so I don't have to walk all the way across campus to get coffee.
I think the new Commons area gives students opportunity to use computer, other resources. And while you're here, you can enjoy the time with other students. And especially with the new coffee and beverage area, I think students really enjoy that.
Personally, I like all the new additions here. I especially like the new coffee area where we can buy drinks whenever. Also, I like the new renovations they're doing upstairs. I think it's really going to benefit all the student athletes who have to come here for study hall. I like all the tutors here as well, because now they're constantly at your fingertips, and you can get help from them at any time.
Okay, so I'm actually a tutor here in the Learning Commons, and I like the new environment because it seems more relaxed and open and collaborative.
Yeah, I'm a student. So I really like that about it, and I like that the library is nearby, so students can do research while they're getting tutoring help.
I'm a student athlete for softball, and I like it because we come here for the library, and then it's easier to get help. We don't have to travel across the campus just to get help.
I'm a peer tutor, and I like the new Learning Commons because there's a lot more students that come in for all the different subjects, and we can all work together to help them.
Any questions?
So, so.
Awesome, okay. Like Andrea says, it's a really great time to be here at KCKCC. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Amanda. Many years ago, a lot of people thought about the word "work" and thought of a physical place. Today, that is not the case. Work is a state of mind, and so is studying. It doesn't really have a place, doesn't really have time. And that's what we do. My team and I are working on empowering students so they have the resources that empower them to study when they need to study, wherever they are. Thank you for listening.
I do have a question to ask, and you're the technology guy anyway. Mentioned something around technology needs. What do you see that we still need over there? It's a great space, you guys have done a wonderful job. What do you see we still need to be thinking about?
You know, Dr. Daniels, you and I have had many conversations about the technology gap. And I think it would be great to provide some of the resources for the disadvantaged students. So if we can have some laptops for people to check out where they come in and use and utilize while they are sitting there, I think that would be great. And we're working on getting these resources, some iPads. Also, making some of the digital resources that people or students utilize highly now in classrooms. And I think we are moving in that direction by approving the fifty thousand dollars purchase for the circulation system. That will open the door for many libraries that will be available for our students, our faculty. So we are on the right track. Technology has become an integral part of the classroom today. And in order for us to prepare our students to join the workforce, we really have to expose them to what kind, whatever technology that is out there in the field, whether that is emailing, social media. And if you look at some of the classroom shelves right now, social media has become an integral part of that. So we have to educate them how to use this. And we're working on it.
Bass, would you introduce some of the other people who are here, who are located in the Learning Commons?
Would everybody please stand up? I have Michael Cozart, Director of the Trio, Grant, and Deborah Newton. I hate to put them on the spot, they weren't prepared, but every month, we kind of prepare to give you an update on what's going on as the time allows. So we started with the library last month because we were talking about purchasing the circulation system. Today, we talked about the Learning Resource Center, and next month, we will have more.
Good morning, Michael Cozart, Director for Trio Student Support Services. We, we are in the Learning Commons. This is our, we've concluded our first year. We've successfully concluded our first year, we're moving into our second year of funding. We were funded, refunded for the second year with an increase of six thousand dollars. And so we are doing great things, and glad to be a part of the Learning Commons.
Mike?
Yes?
Actually, I'm glad you've come up, because I actually had a question from our board back at page twenty-four. It noted that we had eighty-two point six percent success rate with students at the two-point-oh GPA?
Yes.
And can you talk to me about, one, that percentage? I mean, I know when you talk to anything over eighty, it sounds high to some folks. But being an old principal, I would, I would not be satisfied with an eighty-two point six percent success rate. And the two-point-oh GPA is also a bit concerning to me. So if you could just talk to me about those requirements a little bit and educate us as to those numbers?
So when the grant was written, the grant was academic success. The two-point-oh was that GPA that was written inside of the grant. And so for the students that are serviced by Student Support Services, we had eighty-two point six students who, who persisted from one semester to the next. We have, we have eighty-two percent students with a GPA of two-point-oh or above. And we have, and so these are, then these are students whose, whose GPAs are two-point-oh and above. And that number's a little skewed when, because we have students whose GPAs are lower than two-point-oh, but because of the classes, they've taken, that are developmental classes, and they've successfully passed the class, those numbers, those, their GPA doesn't improve with. And so eighty-two percent shows.
That exceeds the correct requirement.
It exceeds the grant, the grant requirement is sixty-four percent. It was written that we would.
So sixty-four percent, so we're at eighty-two?
We're eighty-two.
Okay. And the two-point-oh?
Yes.
What are, how, what strategies, or are we just content with that as our baseline? Or, I mean, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but success at collegiate level, really, is three-oh. Anything below that, you don't quit scholarships, you don't qualify for certain academic honors, those kind of things. So, and we have our more, what I want to call challenged students taking this on. So if we really want them to be successful, having minimum standards won't necessarily get them there. They probably have to even be a niche above in order to be paid attention to. So what?
So we're not comfortable with two-point-oh, two-point-oh. That's just the minimum goal. And so the students that are serviced in the Trio Grant are students who are first generation, students who are low income, or students with a disability. And these are students who are disadvantaged and students who typically would not be at a college. And so these are the students that we service. So two-point-oh is just the minimum, is just the standard. It was written into the grant for.
The grant requirement, so two-point-oh and above. It doesn't mean that this is the average.
Do they come into the program at two-point-oh?
No, so we recruit students who are new to the college, students. So in our first year, we recruited students, new to the college, students who were at the college. And so at the end of this first semester, at the end of spring of two thousand sixteen, the GPA was a minimum of two-point-oh. And so we have those that are two-point-oh and above, and then two-point-oh and below. And so that, that's, that was written in the grant of what academic success, a minimum of academic success, two-point-oh would prove successful.
I think a more interesting number, I think, for the board would be what the average grade point was. And of the students that completed the program, did they have a, was it, were they averaged at two-point-eight, three-point-eight? You know, I think that'd give us a better idea of what the success was in the program if we saw a grade point average.
I can have that information for you at the next meeting.
My guess is you had all over the, you probably had some very, very successful students, probably some of just barely made too. I think the grade point average would be interesting to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we agree, but this grant is specifically for those students who would not otherwise be successful. And that's why they're succeeding at a two-point-oh, because, because that's why we have the Trio Grant. So we're going to make sure that they are successful, but that's where they are now. And in three or four, three or four semesters when they graduate, they'll be ready, college-ready to transfer.
Do they work themselves out of this program, Michael? I mean, if they're successful, or they go, or do they stay in the Trio program?
No, no, we serve them from the time that they're, from the time that they're admitted to the program until they graduate. We monitor and track them even after they graduate. We even assist students in transferring to four-year institutions.
So another interesting number would be the retention rate of the students that were in the program.
And so.
Was it a good retention rate, people coming back and remaining in the program?
So our persistence rate is, was eighty-seven percent, students that persisted from one semester to the next.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, good members.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would just like to say that Michael, Amanda, and I are working together as a team to make the Learning Commons a much better place for students to come and learn. We're making lots of improvements, we're continuing to clean, organize, and look at ways to provide a good opportunity for students in the building. We're starting the process of migrating to the new Alma computer system, and we're very excited about that.
So would you tell them what you do? What's your job title?
Building the A.S.O.N.
Thank you. What does that mean?
Never knew. Oh, building the A.S.O.N. I just basically coordinate things with like maintenance and I T. in different places and make, I help with the renovations, basically, and work with any vendors, anybody like that.
People want to schedule a meeting and they go through you?
Exactly, yeah. I just kind of organize.
Kind of like Cliff Smith over at the Tech Center. That's the model we're using. There's a go-to person, everybody knows to go to her for whatever, and then she knows where to send.
She's the Sarah the Alma presentation.
And Deborah has been instrumental in researching and negotiating and working with the vendor. Very, very, very important. That concludes the report unless you have more questions.
Thank you. Great job.
Well done.
I have one more thing I forgot to announce. Cliff Smith and, and, Cliff more regularly than me attend the statewide TEC meeting. I got a call from the TEC Board asking me to present on this Thursday about the success of our TEC programs. And so, I'll be doing that, and Cliff Smith will be with me on Thursday. We'll be presenting in Topeka on Thursday.
Beautiful. That concludes my report.
All right. Need a motion to approve the President's report?
So, move.
Second.
We'll move the second to accept the President's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Interim Vice President of Academics, Dr. Walker.
Thank you, Trustee Addix, and good morning.
Good morning.
You have my report. There are just three items I'd like to highlight on that. Number one, if you turn your attention to health professions, of the five programs reporting pass rates for this past spring, three of them, that would be medical assistant, physical therapy assistant, and respiratory therapy assistant, had a 100% pass rate. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to Dr. Tiffany Bowman and her team. Secondly, under math, science, computer techno, excuse me, under Dr. Kramer's area. I would like to commend him and, and the folks he assembled on very short notice who instigated a telephone campaign after the drops for non-payment this fall. They, in about two days, they contacted loosely 600 students and successfully re-enrolled about two-thirds of them. It was a massive effort, and it very, very greatly appreciated. So, thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Excellent. I don't know.
And, last but not least, I want to extend my thanks to the Academic Calendar Committee since we discovered the challenges in the previous calendar. They have been very dedicated and meeting every week to review and make sure that we are in 100% compliance with everything we need to be in compliance with. And as you can see, we've managed to finish up this year. You approved it earlier in the consent agenda. And we are looking forward to establishing then our procedures, publishing our minutes so anyone can track them at any point. Many thanks for that. Are there any questions about the report?
Yes, Dr. Walker, we did not approve that as part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I-
We're gonna approve that as part of your report.
Okay.
So, I need a motion to approve the spring-
I have a couple of questions first.
Go right here.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Walker, let's see, when could we expect the report on the pilot study to track the impact of the developmental reading classes along with the core credit?
Shirley, thank you, Trustee Rios. You may recall back in July that Dr. Gibbons challenged us to get more students in, through the developmental education process more quickly. And there are three pilots that are going on this fall that we're aware of. This was the latest one to get started due to personnel changes, but it did start this past week. They're expecting to take a pulse check, if you will, at midterm time. I wouldn't necessarily cite that as, as a good data point, but it is a pulse check with the ID to implement more fully in the spring. It's a contextual learning pilot, which is to say they're using the credit-bearing class to provide the study material for the skills-bearing class. And as soon as I have more, I will be glad to share with you.
How many students do we have in those programs? Approximately, not exact number, in, in those innovative programs we're trying to, how many students we have involved in that closely?
I believe it is, how many do we have in the pre-comp?
We have nine students right now. They've all maintained their enrollment throughout. It's gonna be Dr. Garrett checking with those students on a weekly basis to track how they're doing in the course. And they do, they're something like that. We have nine, they, they all started, they've all been retained in the course, and they're doing just fine.
And my understanding is it's about, it's a similar number in the, in the reading program as well.
Okay.
We hope to bring them up to scale in the spring.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add that Dr. Terry and Dr. Wilson are working very closely with those students. They're students who are able to wave out of the developmental placement, and they have counseling, advising, and support for each of those students. So, we started with a small number, and we hope to grow from that certainly the next semester. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but yes.
The only thing that I will add is I know that Sean has shared with me-
Could you come to the podium, please?
I'm sorry, good morning. The only extra thing I would add is I know Sean has already started sharing with me some of the email responses that he's getting from these students in this program. So, apparently, so far, it's going really well. The, the big purpose is to continue to stay in communication with these students and make sure that the students are communicating back with us and letting us know how's it going and, and, you know, what are they doing in their class. So, as of last week, Sean, you have pretty much reached out, I think, everybody in the class, and he's received notification back from them.
How were they selected?
They were, in a sense, randomly selected. They, well, not randomly, to be honest with you, because when they came to take the placement test, they, if they scored at a certain level, they were given this option. So, they were able to self-select into the program. So, they, it was their option if they wanted to participate in the, in the study.
So, did we, was nine the maximum, or that was the number that was-
That was all we were able to get at that point. We started a little bit later than we, we should've. By then, enrollment had already kicked in. It was almost the very beginning of the, of the semester the courses were going to start. So, we were very limited in our pool of students who were eligible to participate in the study. And then, if you were eligible, it would be completely up to you if you would decide to select to be in the study.
Are these new students to the campus?
No, these are a variety of students, I believe, Sean. Do you know?
Are they, are they all new students, or are they?
No, some are new and some are returning students. We're looking at the developmental course of pre-comp. So, if they tested pre-comp, they had the option, they took on the score, we have four ranges we're looking at. And in that score, they had the option to go ahead and go into comp one, understanding that they would have to be successful. And if they weren't successful, they would have to take pre-comp. But we let them know that we were gonna provide resources. I'm communicating with the email, we'll call, let them know that if they're needing assistance, we're letting know where the resources are at on campus and encourage them to take advantage of those before they start out in comp if they do. But it was, it was a combination of some students and some students that were coming back for the second semester, but they hadn't started that special course yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Walker, also on page 18, could you give, provide a synopsis of your summary of your findings on freshman seminars? As we are, been introduced, we, we have a new position, a new initiative in regard to this. I'd be interested in what your findings were.
Sure. The study looked at five areas. That was to say institutional practices, course setup and content, instructor qualifications and outcomes. And it was conducted, I collected data from four sources. One was I surveyed other community colleges across the state of Kansas. I surveyed KC, KCC students who have taken it in the last three years, and KC, KCC faculty who have taught it in the last three years, and also then against our own institutional outcomes. The condensed, ultra condensed version is that most campuses do have such a course, and they do have a positive impact on student retention and completion rates, not necessarily on GPA. We're working on that piece, too. And then, there are very specific outcomes that are also measured, but the two most important ones are the relationship building between the, the student and someone else on campus, whether it's a faculty member, whether it's a staff member, whether it's another student, but some level of engagement. The second most important outcome that comes from it seems to be their familiarity with college processes and, and customs and the environment, like, you know, knowing when to drop a course as opposed to just letting the end happen naturally, when to seek an intervention as opposed to getting so far down behind you can't get up. So, those are the things that we're working on, and I have every confidence that Ms. White, Mr. Kramer, whom I haven't worked with much yet, but Doctors Terry, Doctors Wilson, and soon-to-be Dr. Garrett will pick up the ball and do a good job from there.
Thank you.
Trustee Brian Powell?
Well, I, I just wanted to, to make a, a quick comment. I had the pleasure of attending a jazz festival in Johnson County on September 10th. And, of course, one of the reasons I wanted to go was our jazz ensemble were featured. And I can tell you, that audience was blown away. I mean, I kind of knew what to expect. We all know how wonderful they are. But I can tell you that predominantly Johnson County audience were just amazed. So, I really wanted to acknowledge, and I did run up and, and acknowledge Stafford, John Stafford, and thank him personally. I mean, not in front of the audience, just, you know, behind the scenes.
Oh, you should've did it in front of the audience.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't catch him in time, and I, no, I just wanted him to know that I was there and that we, and I think there were some other of our, of our folks there, too. But it, it was really amazing.
And that's the same group that's performing at the Nationals.
Yes, yes. And they're also, they're going to be, they have a, a couple of things that they're opening at, at the gym and with Take Six, and, and, and so, they've, they've got some exciting things coming up.
They were on television.
Of course, the other plus was also, I got to see Marilyn May, but, so they were in good company, and so was she. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Oh, great. Yeah.
I have one question, or just some comments from Dr. Walker. You mentioned in your report about the new performance agreements for 2017 and 2019 submitted to the Kansas Board of Regents.
Yes.
I know you had mentioned that in the past, increasing Hispanic students was a major issue. Would you speak to what the major issue was, because I think it's relevant to what we've been talking about, that was submitted to the Board of Regents for our, for our work?
Sure. The Kansas performance agreements, the K-BOR performance agreements, we have some areas that they request us to focus on. We have some, some latitude to choose things that are important to us as an institution. And per our conversation, we're really focusing, well, we are continuing to focus. We have chose, chose to focus in the last cycle, and we chose to continue that forward in increasing the enrollment of Hispanic students. And as you could probably see from the video on the Learning Commons, they have a, an opportunity to speak Spanish every, I don't know if that's a weekly meeting or, or what. I believe it's a weekly meeting. But that's important for both our students who are studying, and also an important step toward making this Hispanic students that are here feel at home, feel welcomed. And, of course, we've had an opportunity recent to hire a number of fully bilingual people, and that's, that's huge in making this a more welcoming environment. Two of the, there are actually a total of six performance agreements, but the two of them that we are focusing on are indeed related to developmental education and focusing on retaining students that are involved in developmental education through raising awareness of academic support and not just waiting for them to find us, but reaching out to them. And also then, of course, for the students that are choosing perhaps an alternative path to get around the developmental education, again, making sure they know what resources we have and making sure that we are taking the initiative to reach out to them. And those are, those are the basic premises.
Yeah, I, I just think it's encouraging how much the college is doing right now around developmental education. I think we all recognize it's a huge issue for community colleges around the country, and I think we're, I think we're kind of on the forefront of what we're doing around that area. So, I'm just glad to see it's another issue that would go into Board of Regents. I know it's part of our strategic plan, but I just congratulate the administration and faculty and staff on really making that a prime effort, really meeting the needs of our students. Thank you, Dr. Walker.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate before approving Vice President's report to go ahead and have discussion on the calendar?
No.
As part of the report, or are you doing it separate?
No, go ahead and, go ahead and have the discussion on the calendar.
Okay. Dr. Walker, if you could just highlight for us the, the changes that needed to occur in order for us to become in compliance. And again, I would ask, as I did last month, as the committee began work on safeguarding that such an issue never, never happens again.
Thank you, Trustee Rios. Yes, we are, we are certainly working toward that. The first, first step was to simply make sure we got all the impacted parties around the table, and we have learned an awful lot from that. We are, of course, it is, of course, being a faculty-led initiative, but we have representation now from enrollment management, from student services, from financial aid, from the registrar, and all these, these offices on campus have reporting dates and reporting needs and other processes that are impacted by the creation, or the demand of the creation of an exact calendar. So, that was the first part, was making sure that all appropriate parties were in the room and able to talk through the, the development. As I mentioned, we are currently embarking on a very ambitious schedule, and you have the fruits of the first one with a, with a sign-off by office as that, yes, the calendar as proposed meets their, their needs. In essence, this particular spring calendar, and I'm gonna shift to the specific for a moment, what we found was that with the two Monday holidays, with starting after Martin Luther King Day and President's Day, our Monday, classes that meet on Mondays only are short. And we took a look to see if it was possible to relocate those particular classes. There were 48 of them. We don't have the real estate to do so. So, that'll be a conversation for the deans and I moving forward to, is there, is there a way that we can avoid that meeting pattern, at least in the spring? So, the short version then of what had to happen to this spring was we had to add a full week of class, a week onto the end. The Monday class meeting rolled over, and then Tuesday, the exam schedule could not start until Tuesdays. And that gives us a very long exam period, somewhat longer than some of our peer institutions are utilizing. That's another note to self to take a look at moving forward. But the, the reason we're bringing it for you today is that because the academic year is already underway, and faculty, many of our faculty, as we know, pursue other kinds of professional development opportunities throughout the summer, and because frankly, some of our students pursue internships and so on and so forth throughout the summer, we wanted to put it before you as soon as we were confident that we had a good calendar so that folks could make appropriate arrangements for some of these programs that are more competitive.
My only other ques, I was, I was curious, and I'll just ask the question. There's no student representation on the, on the committee. These are adults and obviously have opinions about, about the calendar. Is it not a good thing to consider having student representation?
And I am so glad you asked that. We have not, we have not yet gotten into our formal, the creation of our formal bylaws, but that is a topic that has come up under discussion with, with both faculty and, and administration and- and staff, and that is our intent. My priorities for this particular year were to correct the calendars that had already been approved, and then we're going to take about a month and dig down into formalizing what the, the composition of the committee and the procedure should be moving forward, and then, yes, what that student representation may look like, whether it would be through perhaps the Director of Student Activities, or whether we will actually be able to, to obtain the services of actual students is not clear yet, because of course, scheduling is challenging.
Sure.
But it is absolutely our intent, and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions about the academic calendar? Need a motion to approve the spring semester 2016-2017 academic calendar?
So moved.
Second.
The move is seconded to approve the spring semester 2016-2017 academic calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move approval of Vice President's report. Second.
The move is seconded to approve Vice President's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Chief Financial Officers, Dr. Lindahl.
Thank you. I think you've heard a lot about what's been happening on our campus, and that is certainly what we've been busy with in finance and operations with our, our key initiative of recruit, enroll, and retain. You've seen much evidence of that this morning. I would just like for just a moment for Dean Cliff Smith to come up, and also Tony Tompkins, and if Jeff Sixta is here, and Tony, I think your coaches are here as well, just to take a moment to thank all of them. Come on up to the podium if you would and be recognized. We're officially on the softball field, so we have play ball, and so just wanted each of them to come up and be recognized. So, come on up, come on up, and we'll celebrate for a moment. Come on up. So, just wanted to recognize each and every one of you for your effort to bring this in, certainly under budget in a stellar playing field. It's the envy of the state, and so we do thank each and every one of you for your work and for your efforts to make this happen. It was certainly a project that we bid out, and we also did a great deal of the work internally, and so high recognition to Cliff for bringing our classes together to make this happen, and Jeff, also in his team, for the countless hours that you all have spent. So, thank you very much, and play ball, right? October 22nd, grand opening.
I'd be interested in the coaches' reaction, because you started using the facility. Just talk, just talk to us about it. What are maybe a couple of the noticeable differences?
Well, we were out there playing Friday when it was sprinkling out, so that's something that's brand new to us. Kind of have to redo our, our practice plan because we have so much room to do everything, whereas our old field, we could hit and not work on defense. Now, we can hit in the cages, we can work on defense on the field, we have two bullpens that we can use at the same time, so we just, we get a lot more done in the amount of time that, that, that we can be on the field, so it's great.
Great, great, well, we're looking forward to October 22nd.
Come on down, take a look at it, yeah.
October 22nd, mark your calendars. When we were at the trustee meeting, president meeting last weekend in Liberal, one of the fellow trustees, one of our fellow trustees, asked about the field, and he said that you all are the envy of the other, of the other softball coaches and athletic directors for that field, and so they were, they were very excited that we were able to get that in place and in play, so thank you.
It's by far the best field in, in the state of Kansas. Even going up against KU, I would say, they have a little bit more money and facility-wise, but field, there's not, there's not, there's not a better one out there than ours, so we really appreciate what you guys did for us and hope to make you proud on it.
Great.
What, what time is that event on the 22nd?
Nine o'clock with the pancake breakfast, 9:45 for the opening ceremonies, and then our first game will be at 10 o'clock.
And Mayor Holland and President Givens will throw out the first pitch, so very exciting for us.
All right.
Boy, it seems like our baseball stadium is used by the community quite a bit. You foresee this, are you getting inquiries already about softball?
We already have a rental, yep.
I bet, you're going to get inundated, I'll bet.
Yes, yep.
Great. More, more community people on our campus, positive experience.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Well, while they're up there, I just wanted to note for the Finance Committee on Page 20 and 21, Jeff, the buildings and ground, I think, have earned a very special recognition for all of the projects that your, your crew is assisting on. It is really saving the college a considerable amount, and yet there's no compromise in quality whatsoever, so please let your crew know how appreciative that we are for that extra work, and I know they're working weekends and all sorts of things, and Cliff also has been very helpful in helping us in our bidding process, getting us local vendors at a less expensive cost, and then, of course, coordinating students that are using projects as a learning experience, so very hands-on, and so I, again, I just wanted to publicly recognize you and your staffs for helping this college and providing even better learning environment for our, our students. And our AED, I think our, our athletic programs have never performed at such a high level, and I, I know that you have, along with your coaches, a lot to do with that, so again, appreciation to you academically and athletically. That's right, that's right. It is very good, and I know we've got some bleachers coming, and I'm sure that's causing a little bit of, of excitement, and then also, I'm sure there's some hiccups too, but you, you address the hiccups, and we'll just take the excitement, okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Do you have my report? If there are any other questions, I'm certainly open to answer those. We just invite you to look at the dual entrance as you leave. As Trustee Rios said, we are managing multiple projects that will make a significant difference for our students, the entryway to the Student Services Enrollment Management area, the fire science that you've heard about, the Learning Commons, and we also have begun work on the Conference Center by the lake, and we'll bring back the report about that next month, so.
Dr. Lindahl, I just, I just have one question under the campus police. I noticed where Deputy Chief Jess, Jason Severs attended training and webinar on concealed carry.
Correct.
Could we at some point get a report on that?
Yes.
I think it's going to be a really critical issue for us, and, and I don't know where it might fit in a particular meeting, but I, I think it's something we'd, we'd like to at least start by hearing what he learned.
Okay, we, we do have ongoing meetings on that, the legal webinar that he attended. I've been meeting with my counterpart from Johnson County Community College, and also our state group. We're all looking to see what options we have and what those would cost, and what the, what the recommendation would be then that would come to the board, so absolutely, we hope to have a report for Finance Committee meeting by October, if not October, November, but we are certainly, certainly is an item of angst for higher education.
Oh, of course, yeah.
To think of the guns on campus, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The only other item that I have is just that, as you know, we had a 4% cut in our budget this year from the state level, and the messaging is that there will be an additional 5% rescission. And so for us, we're, we're starting to, reported that to Finance Committee, starting to look at how we would be able to return those funds. For us, that's about a half a million dollars, about $500,000, so more on that to follow as well, so thank you.
I do have a question on page 21, and I think Dr. Terry probably. I noted that we have not picked up where we were at in the year 1213. We have had an increase, but I was just wondering, have you done, had time to do research behind these numbers? There was a 17.8% decrease. Now, over the last two years, we've got about a 15%, but that's not equaling where we were, and so I was just wondering what your research was in regards to, and trustees, this was on concurrent and dual enrollment update.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm Stephen Terry, and so I'll answer your question the best I can. Our dual enrollment, our high school enrollment, as you see, our dual and concurrent enrollment, that's under Mary Cole Peterson, and we've had tremendous growth there. Over the last three years specifically, she's had about a 20% increase in her dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment schools, students from the high schools, and so we're going to continue to support her in those efforts. I know there's a meeting this Thursday where the high school counselors will be coming here to campus, we'll be able to talk with them about what we can do to increase that traffic. I also had a great meeting, just a short, brief meeting, this weekend at the NAACP with the Superintendent of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and her goal is that every single high school student will, will finish and graduate with one year of college credit under their belt, and we want to be instrumental in that process as we move forward, so we're going to continue to foster those relationships and grow those students.
Okay. So, who did you say was the primary?
It's Mary Cole Peterson, sir.
Okay.
Mary Cole Peterson, okay. I'd be interested in the, in your report, it doesn't have to be an oral presentation that you're written, again, what strategies, what are we finding, and then the strategies to address those findings?
Yes, sir.
As we continue to grow the need, not just within KCK, but all of our school systems that we serve, have some college readiness goals?
Yes, sir.
And that, and how we are preparing ourselves to be able to take on, you know, this, this is several hundred students possible, you know, we won't get them all, but I would think because it's our service area, we should get the lion's share.
Yes, sir, it's actually more than 5,000 students eligible across, not only just Wyandotte County, but beyond.
Okay, all right, well, I look forward to having the detailed reports.
Yes, sir, I'll work on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move approval of Vice President's report. Second.
I have a question, Dr. Lindahl, we got a revised report, anything significant in the difference between the, yeah, several hundred thousand dollars?
It was a journal entry, there was a journal entry, that was, that has been corrected, yes, and it's on the top line, so, yes, thank you.
Little approval of Dr. Lindahl's report. Second.
Okay. The move is seconded to accept Dr. Lindahl's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Report from committees.
Oh, go ahead.
Trustee Ash.
Oh, well, I sent you all the minutes from the quarterly meeting. Want to thank Trustee Maddox and Vice President Lindahl for making the trek to Liberal as well. Had some good conversations, discussions there. I had forwarded you all the other information, asked for your input, as we broke out into several committees and discussed, you know, various items and things, so we're working on putting together legislative agenda for the upcoming state legislature, and we'll finalize that process at Labette Community College in Parsons in December. And, you know, we asked for a presentation about, from Deputy Chief Severs on, you know, the concealed carry, that, that was a topic that came up. The trustees from Pratt wanted to know if any other colleges were considering implementing campus police, you know, in, in response to preparing for having these guns on campus. None of the other colleges responded that, that they were. There are only a few of us that have actually campus police as we know it, only a few, only a couple of the community colleges. And so, everybody's wrestling with this because that deadline is coming up, and we're going to have to have our policy by July 1st of 2017, you know, what, what we're going to do. So, people remain hopeful that with a revised legislature coming in and being seated in January, that possibly some of this will be revisited and possibly amended or revised, but it's, I think it's a lot of wishful thinking, more than true optimism, you know, that it'll occur, so we'll certainly watch it and we'll see, but, you know, all the colleges are sort of struggling and dealing with it, and a couple of campuses, you know, are already opened up, you know, to it, so.
Don, I'm, in regard to even if the legislature changes and that, what, do we know what the governor, would the governor veto?
Likely he would, and so, you know, I'm quite certain.
So, we would need to have a super majority to?
Exactly, so that becomes the issue. Is there going to be enough change in the legislature to overturn a governor's veto?
Uh-huh, see, that's what I'm, I think there will be a change in the legislature, but I don't think it'll be a super majority.
It's clearly shifting back toward the center, it's clearly shifting back toward the center, but whether there will be enough to overturn a governor's veto is the real issue. That will determine how much energy and effort goes into changing anything, because if there's no prospect of doing that, then likely there, there may be some discussion, maybe some people, you know, try, and they may work to try to even sway some more people in that direction as the landscape is chasing, changing, maybe others might be willing to consider moving to the center a little bit on some issues. It's all too speculative right now, so we need to be prepared.
I don't think it's a guarantee that government will veto it, so I hope we would continue to move forward with some kind of legislation and say, let's stop this, and then put the pressure on him, like, you know, it's a lot of pressure on Governor Brownback right now.
Yeah.
You might take another look at that, so. Right, right now, I'd say you're right, I think it's unlikely, but I think we'll have to move forward in testing on that if we can.
Trustee Brian.
Yes, Ray and I just have a real brief report. We had the opportunity to meet for the first time as the newly constituted College and Community Relations Committee, and had the opportunity to hear of all of the things that there, there's not always time to catch up on all the wonderful things that are, that are happening on the campus, and we, we did have that opportunity and really appreciate that, Dr. Lindahl and Bez and, and Dr. Givens, and Tammy was there, who's moving into a new position in marketing, and, and certainly she needs to kind of get in there and, and get oriented before, we, we talked about some options, but I think the main thing was, it was wonderful to hear all of, you know, a lot more detail about everything that was going on on the campus, and then we look forward to connecting with Tammy when she has a chance to kind of settle in and, and hopefully move forward, Ray, is there?
Yeah, I was impressed with what Tammy is doing and the plans that she has. I just think it, the committee's still finding our way. I mean, it's a brand-new committee, and, and we're still trying to figure out what we should be doing as a committee in relationship to the college and the community, so looking forward to more conversation and looking forward to the work that Tammy seems to be doing. She, it seems like everywhere I go on campus, she's there, so she's certainly putting a lot of effort into it, impressed. So, yeah, I think it's a lot of potential, looking forward to more conversations and committee meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I forgive, forgive me, but I probably should've said, before we meet again, before this board meets again, a number of us will be going to the ACCT National Congress the first week of October in New Orleans, so we'll be maintaining heads-up on picking up, there is a national conversation particularly about this campus safety and security and, and so forth, and so we'll be, we'll be sensitive to that. They are actually sponsoring a, a special seminar at the end of the Congress, which I will not be able to stay over and attend, but they've had a couple of them, and we'll be watching for opportunities to attend those, you know, going forward, so we'll be able to come back in October and report what's going on, on, on the national scene.
Very good.
Now, there's also a, a meeting- There's also a meeting this evening at the tech with clergy and a criminal justice approach, so I wouldn't be surprised if that also is...
Community forum.
Is a part of that discussion. What time is that?
It's at 6:00.
6:30?
Mr. Chair?
I'll be at that forum tonight. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to share, I appreciate the swift response of staff. We did get the average GPA is 2.8 for our trio students, which brings much relief to this trustee, and I can assure you of that. And then with the persistence rate of 87%, those are the numbers that we should be bragging about. Those are very good, and I commend staff on those particular numbers.
Congratulations on your renewal and your 3% increase.
Yes.
I think that's a reflection of success for programs. Good job.
Lot to be excited about this morning. Okay, any other committees wishing to report? J.D.? Moving on to Item 11, Executive Session. I need a motion to go into Executive Session. I think we need an hour.
Yes.
An hour. Motion to go into Executive Session for one hour for consultation, with the attorney on matters protected by the attorney-client privilege to protect the board's position in administrative proceedings.
Will there be action to follow, Mr. Chair?
I don't believe so.
No action to follow. So moved.
Second. Move is second to go into Executive Session for one hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, we'll have a 10-minute break and move into session at 10 after 11. All right, I call the meeting back in order.
All right.
Susan, you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. It's been requested of the board if you would approve the placement of a plaque on the softball field. And Coach Tillery brought this forward. It's in honor of a longtime coach here at the college. And I can hold up the plaque here for you to see. It is, okay, Coach Justin Kaufrich. And he had been a longtime coach here and was very much an advocate for safety. I don't know, those of you who knew him, his slogan was, "Life is tough, get a helmet." And so they believed that. He inspired countless of our players, and that we would do a great service by honoring his memory and also inspiring others to follow in his footsteps. So that would be placed at the base of the flag on the new softball field. So I would move approval.
Move to approve the recommendation of the administration for a plaque honoring a former coach?
Second.
Okay, you heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Are we given?
Susan?
Okay, then we have a second suggestion for your consideration for approval for naming, and that would be that formerly the Conference Center down by the lake, that that be named in honor of trustee Mary Ann Flunder.
What would the actual name be?
We're going to poll the college to find out how they, some people call it a lodge, some people call it cabin by the pond, some people call it the Conference Center. So we're going to poll the college and see which name gets the most votes, and then we'll add that to after Mary Ann Flunder, put that first, and then Mary Ann Flunder at the bottom, probably that way, Mary Ann Flunder at the bottom.
Okay. Could we hold off taking a vote until we hear the final name?
Well, we kind of wanted to make sure that it was okay to...
To honor her.
To honor her. Without, we didn't want to move forward with sending out something to name it that without board approval.
Right.
It's a big assumption on our...
So you'd like us to bring the full name back at the next meeting, is that?
Well, I think having both college and community awareness of honoring a, first of all, a female and an African-American. Our buildings, I think, the names have been well-earned honors, but having a female and a minority name on a building, and with Mary Ann Flunder, I think that particular building is very community-oriented. I'm not saying the college isn't, but that particular space is, and it's the first building, and so I believe that it's particularly appropriate. And so I would encourage the board to support the naming of that building, whatever they end up calling. I've always been opposed to Conference Center, because that's an embarrassment. That is not a Conference Center. So whatever other name they can come up with is probably going to be a heck of a lot better than Conference Center. But having Mary Ann's name on a face of one of our facilities, the first minority and female honored in such a way on this campus, I think sends a very positive message to both the internal and external communities that we serve.
I move that we allow the Conference Center to be renamed in honor of Mary Ann Flunder, and for the administration to bring back to the board recommendations on the full name of what it will be called.
Very good. You heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I say something else?
Remember, back in 1973, that was a Conference Center. I mean, we didn't even have the Reardon Center back in 1973, you know? I mean, that was it. In 1973, that was it. Now, it's an embarrassment, now it's, we've outgrown it, but...
Right. What we want to do is make it part of the alumni weekend and invite her family.
Sure.
And that's why I wanted it this time.
That's where the pancake breakfast will be, right?
Yeah, and add it to the agenda, the list of things that we're going to do, and make sure that it's a part of that, so everybody... We'll have a larger crowd attend the dedication of our...
It also has to have a plaque that says, "This is Flunder, call me."
Yes, Flunder.
Somewhere on there or in there.
We'll take care of that. We will take care of that. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my.
Never did think what she wanted.
I remember those days. It was never good.
Well, it was always interesting.
Unfinished business?
Sometimes entertaining.
Move for adjournment?
Second.
We're adjourned.